Nobody wants to sit with you guys?
It's true. Okay. Welcome, good evening, and welcome to the October Village Board Meeting. If you could please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance for us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thanks. We're gonna start off with some staff reports. Altamont Fire Department, do you have something?
First off, on Halloween night, we'll be up to the village park handing out the candy bars like we usually do. They got about 500 candy bars again this year. So, come quick, because they go quick. And if anybody wants to see the new engine tonight after the meeting, I'd be more than welcome to take you out there and show it to you. It is in service.
Nice. Going well so far?
Not that we haven't had to use it.
That's true. Great, thank you. Police Department, do you have any reports this evening? No? Thank you, Chief. Public Works, Jeff?
We started flushing hydrants this week. Larry's up coming down the hill. I think he went out Altamont Boulevard today. Tomorrow probably be in the fairgrounds and working on this side of the older part of the village. Letting copper inspections removed along good. We've got probably over half of the old part of the village already done.
Oh, good.
And a lot of good cooperation. Everybody's helping out good.
That's what I've heard.
Yeah. We've been working on our LEAF Act. We're gearing up for that as soon as our hydrants are done, probably in two weeks hopefully.
He told me probably the week of the, like, 16 through 18, someplace in there?
Yeah, we'll be getting on that. Let's see. Luke's been working on our Plows and Sanders, getting them ready. And, oh, our summer help is done now, but they did a real good job painting, painted the signs, street signs, painted all the hydrants, did quite a bit of painting over in Bozenkill Park, painted a lot of buildings down at the wastewater plant too, so they did a really good job.
Yeah, those two, they did a great job. I think that's some of the best summer help we've had, you know, in a lot, we have, some of the years we haven't had it, but a long time.
Yeah.
They moved quickly. Hopefully they want to come back.
I won't be here, but hopefully whoever's here will look into it and try to get that back.
Unless we talk the end of staying and not retiring.
I don't think they're gonna do that.
It's popular to come back. Exactly.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Thanks. Any other questions for Jeff?
No.
No, sounds good, thank you.
Great, thank you.
At this time, we'll, we have the microphone ready. If you have a public comment, I would ask if you have comments for our public hearing, which is item number two, hold those comments till then, that would be great. But if you have anything else you want to share with the board, please come on up and you can tell us who you are and share your thoughts. Hi Laura. Mine did the same thing. Just had it done yesterday.
Hi, I'm Laura Shore, and I live just outside the village. And I'm president of ACT. I know you'll be speaking about the Winter Fest tonight, so I don't think I need to go through that. You have all the paperwork. It'll be very much like it was last year. We'll have outdoor activities in Orsini, starting with the pet parade. I hope we get a bag piper. And, which has just gotten bigger and better every year, so we'll need police support in the crosswalks. The cones, I thought, worked really, really well.
I thought so too.
In the Fall Festival. So, we'll recommend we can do that again. We will have in the Sonic, and then the, that, so the, the park will go from noon to three. We've shortened it up a little bit, because it just gets cold. We're gonna have carriage rides again, which everybody was really excited about last year. And we'll have activities in the Masonic, which people are pretty typical year over year. That'll go till four. The partners we have are St. John's Lutheran will have activities for kids, and the Reform Church will have the living nativity, which is just beautiful. And that will be at three, which will give people time to interact with the animals and just mix and mingle after the event. So it's very village-focused intentionally, and we're looking forward to it. The only thing I wanted to mention a little bit on, this is more of a question, I guess, we had a real problem in the Fall Festival with electricity. I think it may be because we had a bigger sound system for the band than we've had in the past, but whatever the reason, the outlet in the front wasn't working. So we couldn't plug anything into that. And then the outlets were underpowered, for our needs anyway, in, under the gazebo. And you couldn't run the, the bounce house and the sound system together. And then we had invited local businesses to serve food in the park. They then couldn't heat their food, because that would draw more power. We ended up having to scramble at the last minute for temporary generators. So we were able to go forward, but it was really very, kind of like, oh my god, what's gonna happen? When the bounce house collapsed, that was like the, you know, the moment of truth. So I guess I would, we won't have those kinds of needs for Winter Fest.
Sure.
We won't have music, for example. But I guess I would like to have a better understanding of the electrical, and maybe if we're gonna do these bigger events, which people seem to really like, we might want to consider increasing or changing or the power situation.
We can talk about what's available or what we need to look at. I do know last year, you know, only the band and the bounce house was on, the one thing, so it seemed to be fine. I think when the other cords were running to the vendors, that's just too much for what we have there. That would be my guess. And so, not knowing, you know, I didn't know, we wouldn't know, have known that that was gonna be all plugged in. So, we'll have to see if there's a solution. And if not, you know, I know the library, you know, helped out by running a cord, and they have outside power, maybe that could be an alternative too, if we have to do something that way.
Just understanding.
So we could talk about it.
Yeah. That'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And Fall Festival is wonderful. It was really well attended, and the weather seemed to hold, so.
Oh, you know, and then, yes.
It did.
Every year, it's not gonna.
Thank you.
Thanks Laura.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm not seeing any movement. Okay. So I will go on to the agenda for this evening. Our item number one is consider approval of pressures abstracts number seven and number eight, and transfer of funds as submitted. Could I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
John is first, and second?
I'll second.
Tressa? And roll call, please.
Trustee Matilowicz?
In favor.
Trustee Farrenhoff?
In favor.
Trustee Scallan?
In favor.
In favor. I'm going to item number two, and I am going to ask, if you don't mind, Kristin, reading the, the notice for us to open our public hearing?
Yes, absolutely. And just before I go ahead and read the public hearing notice, this notice regarding the proposed chicken law was submitted to the newspaper for publication. Unfortunately, it didn't make it in, I think there was a miscommunication, the paper just had indicated it would, would be published, but it wasn't published at least five days in advance of this hearing. So the board is going to go ahead and continue this public hearing and reissue that notice and publish it. So I just wanted to mention that, so you didn't miss anything if you didn't see it published in the newspaper. And I'm going to read the notice that was sent. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held before the Village Board for the Village of Altamont at the Village Community Room on the third day of October 2023 at 7:00 PM regarding adopting a proposed local law entitled "Local Law to Permit the Keeping of Chickens" in the Village of Altamont. The proposed local law would permit the keeping of chickens upon issuance of a permit from the Village of Altamont Building Department. Establish minimum requirements for the design and size of chicken pens and runs. Establish limits on the number of chickens that can be kept on the property. Prohibit the keeping of roosters. Impose minimum standards to ensure sanitary conditions, and require inspection by, by the Village Code Enforcement Officer. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the public hearing and submit comments for the Village Board's consideration. Copies of the proposed local law are available at the Village Clerk's office during normal business hours for the purpose of inspection or procurement by interested persons.
Thank you. Patty, it's online as well? All right, thank you. I just wanted to double check that. So, since our last meetings, we had a meeting, you know, I guess September was that meeting, where we talked and people came, and we wanted to know if they supported drafting this legislation for the keeping of chickens. And it was overwhelmingly yes, so we went ahead and used the old, something we had drafted prior, that a committee came up with, and then we amended some of the things on there, depending on some of the past feedback we had. So that has been published online, or you could have gotten it at the office as well for the last month. So this public hearing is on the, the contents of that, of that draft. So if you have a comment, you are welcome to come to the microphone and, and give us any information you have. Happy to hear it. It's on, so I think you're good. Yeah. You're good.
Hello, my name is Megan Reese. I am from Knox, just outside of Altamont, and I show my chickens in Altamont. I am in both the Burn Knox Westerlow FFA group, as well as a 4-H group, where we focus on the benefits of chickens quite a lot. I also have six wonderful girls of my own, who are just essentially feathered puppies. There are very many, many benefits to keeping chickens, like they teach responsibility in younger handlers. They're also very good at self-correcting your mistakes. If their coop is too dirty, they'll get sick, or they're, or they'll complain to you. They're pretty cleanly animals. They take baths in dust, but it's still a bath. They're also not even slightly loud. Even the roosters, when I had a pullet cockerel temporarily, he was less loud than the neighbor's dogs. And if a chicken gets out, it typically wants to go right back into its run or its coop, because they do not like feeling like a hawk can get them. But chickens teach responsibility in many ways. You need to get up early and go to bed early to let your birds out. You need to feed them and water them. However, you can usually just use a hanging feeder or hanging water. They're also relatively good for the economy with chicken shows and eggs. Even if you don't sell the eggs, it would still save money on buying eggs, and they generally tend to make an area look prettier and more lively. With the showmanship, chicken showmanship can have big money. Even if it's just in the Altamont Fair, you can make upwards of $100. You can also sell the birds, or move on to bigger shows. Chicken shows can bring in large groups of people from many places, 'cause chickens are interesting birds. That's all I have today. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As the parent of the chickenaholic, the only thing I would like to add to, from the legal side, would be to suggest that there be a carve-out that makes sure that these regulations do not apply to the fairgrounds.
It shouldn't. Our zoning doesn't, let me ask Kristin that.
Yeah, it wouldn't just because, right. It's for more of a, a more, I don't, more common in.
It's residential zoning.
Okay. I guess I was more worried about the containment protocols, because the kids do carry their chickens across the fairgrounds. They do have chicken petting, petting events during the fair.
It does, yeah, but I don't, I, without Gary sitting in here, he's probably in the other room soon, is, nothing that, the things we do that way don't usually apply to the fair, because it's a separate.
Usually is scary.
Most of the fair is not in the village.
Most of it's in the town, yes.
Well, the chicken sign is right up by Grand Street.
Poultry? Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's more residential, I believe. This is, this is, that's more.
So the zoning wouldn't really apply to the fair, which is a temporary.
It's its own, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a temporary use that goes on for a week.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay.
But that is an interesting.
Yeah, I'm thinking of.
Yeah, for sure.
Maurice McCormick, she's already writing it down, I seen that. I am in favor of chickens. I have chickens, not in the village, but I have them somewhere. I'm, I'm kinda wondering, are, are we here to talk about, we want chickens, or we don't want chickens?
No, it's about the draft law. This is, tonight is a public hearing on the draft law itself.
That's what.
We've already, you guys, we had that meeting where we had the, we indicated, people indicated they were in favor, and this is why we drafted the law.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I was hoping to see is a copy of that law on the back table, so everyone would be able to look at it and have, if they have questions. I know it's been.
Well, I can tell you, it's been available for a month now, as, you know, as we were supposed to do. We, it's been, it was ready right after that meeting, as soon as we set the public hearing, the law, you know, had to be, was ready.
Yeah, which kinda, I, I was kinda like, okay, so that means they're accepting it. I guess I didn't understand that.
I don't think you were at the last meeting. I don't feel like you weren't here, Maurice. I think you might have missed one. I think you missed one.
Okay.
Sorry.
Life happens.
You were describing it, this was actually, went back to August.
Sorry, it went back to August. I think you were at August. In September, we, we set the public hearing, we had the draft ready.
And this is just to hear your opinions, basically.
Yeah.
Oh, so now we're here tonight to talk about the, the policy, the parameters for keeping chickens in the village?
Sure. Yep.
Because we've already decided, yeah, you can have chickens in the village, pretty much?
Well, we still have to adopt a resolution for it, but yes, we.
Okay. Okay.
So, so you're, you're getting what you want, maybe?
I don't know.
Well, I don't know either.
Here's, here's the questions I have then. By having chickens and getting the permit, we don't, do you have a cost? Like, what is the permit gonna cost?
Permits, yes.
Can you share that?
Sure. A permit is, the first year is 150, and the renewable is 50.
Okay, 150, then 50?
Mm-hmm.
To renew it? Okay. Yearly permit costs, okay, I covered that and that. Also, I seen in there, if you get a permit to have chickens, you are allowing 24/7 access for the building inspector to come onto your property and take a look around. It's in there. That's why I was hoping to see there'd be something back there. You, you, anybody recall that?
Well, they have, they have, they can go, I mean, we don't have one that works 24/7. We don't have that. Our building inspector works six hours a week.
Do you know what those hours are?
It's not, it's not 24/7. It says, "The applicant at any reasonable time during daylight hours to inspect the pen or enclosure."
Right.
As he does now, with, whether it's a roof or a building, he makes time on his way to his other job, whatever, to do inspections during the day when he needs to do that. Always, and has always done that.
Right, but wouldn't there be a requirement for him to show up at your house, to look at something, or maybe, would he cover dog barking?
If someone's applying, that's the requirement. It says, "All applicants for a permit," so they would be the applicant. They're, right? That's.
Right, he would, he would be able, but further down, I think there's like a two-line sentence that says that. If I had, I would, I was gonna print it out.
Well, you must have seen it then.
I did see it, because it kinda was like, okay, so now I'm giving up a right of, you know, somebody can have access at any time in order to have chickens.
Reasonable daylight hours, not any time.
It's not any time, yeah.
All right.
And, you know, it's one thing to keep in mind, and, and just, you know, the five of us do not make up rules for chickens. Just, just to give everyone a background.
Yeah.
We, the original group that put together the 2019 draft was a planning board, zoning board, and resident people that got together and thought, okay, let's draft this law, because people had interest in it. Unfortunately, they had never showed up for it, but we, we drafted something, but based on models from many surrounding municipalities. So, you know, we are very similar to what is around us in the capital district. So, you know, all of this is not like unique to Altamont, just so you, you know, just get the full picture of how it's come together.
Right. And that was one of my questions. Where did the?
We pulled a lot of, because I was on.
Yeah, you were on the committee.
I was on the committee. We pulled a lot of those ideas from Gilderlin, so it's not.
Gilderlin, Goresville, New Scotland, Rotterdam, yeah.
I made it adapted to our.
Yeah, and that was one of my questions.
Absolutely.
Where did the input come from? Where did this, these ideas or these laws come from?
Well, in that committee at the time, you know, we had one person in particular that was doing a lot of research for us, but there were five or six of us that got together. That was not our only thing we were doing, we were doing other zoning things as well. But that was one topic that we, you know, we just, we researched other municipalities at that time. And this time, we took that, and with some of the feedback we got, where people were apprehensive about this law, we kind of, you know, amended some of the things and said, well, you know, this'll, this'll kinda mitigate this issue or that issue, and again, based on other municipalities, and what do you do, what do we do? So.
Yeah, 'cause.
That's where it came from.
Pretty much, every surrounding.
Just about.
Town, village, or whatever, has, has chickens.
Yeah, just about.
So then, just to clarify, are, are you saying the building inspector, obviously you, you fill out a permit, he's gonna come, take a look, check out your coop, whatever you got?
Mm-hmm.
So, after that, he's really not showing up, unless there's a complaint?
Unless there's an issue, I mean, that's like with any zoning topic, yeah.
Well, that was what I was thinking.
Yeah, he's gonna check out the situation, and make sure everything's like it should be. And then, you know, but that, you know, maybe that takes two visits, maybe they would fill out a permit to make sure they built it right, and maybe that, you know, it might take a couple times for him to do that. It's a little bit, it's, it could be a lot of extra work for him in some regards, but we've talked to him, I mean, he, he reviewed it himself as well.
So.
It doesn't, it sounds like you're concerned that there's just gonna be some arbitrary, code enforcement can just show up whenever they want, anytime.
That is my concern, yeah.
And tell you to take it down.
Right.
I think that's completely unreasonable, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
There has to be cause. You know, there would have to be some concern that he would have for the animals, or.
Exactly.
You know, whatever, to do something like that.
Sure.
Okay. You know this is recorded, right? So.
We do.
Okay. The other one that I was wondering about is, you're gonna require the chicken coop to be insulated?
Well, it has to be insulated for the weather here. So it has to, some, one way or another, it has to have something to protect the chickens for the, the cold temperatures. We didn't go into specifics, so.
Okay.
It's not on there, so.
So if it is windproof, if there's windows in it, I, I guess Mike.
I'm imagining, and I'm leaving, a lot of this comes down to, he knows what, what it would need, you know, the building inspector does know what it would be to protect, to insulate something, windproof. They have to be protected from the environment.
Right, and that.
Sun, cold, the whole thing, yeah.
Correct. I was just wondering if, when it said that should be insulated, are, you know, I automatically go to fiberglass rolled-out insulation inside the chicken coop, which, that's insulated to me, but I would not insulate my chicken coop. So.
Well, fiberglass is a type of insulation, it's not the only kind.
Right.
So you could discuss with Gary what, what your thoughts are to protect your chickens, I would think.
Yeah.
And if he says, you know, that's sufficient, then you're good to go.
Okay.
I think we don't wanna see animals, like.
No, you don't want to insulate it, because you're gonna end up with too much humidity, you're gonna end up with condensation.
But it also says proper ventilation, and stuff.
Well, yes.
So there's a whole bunch of parameters that will.
Ensure the chickens are happy and healthy.
And that your building isn't going to rot, or.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Okay.
Gary knows what he's doing.
Gary does?
He does.
He does.
He does.
Gary and I were gonna chat. All right. Okay, let me see, I don't think I have anything else, except for, you know, I've been here, I'm in favor of chickens, and that might be about it. The input, the insulation, went over all that, yearly costs. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Maurice.
Hello, I'm back here with a few more facts about chickens. Chickens are actually incredible at self-insulating. Mine will walk outside perfectly fine in three-degree weather. They, I spoil them, so they have a heat lamp, and their coop is insulated. However, my other farmer friends that I know, the only real insulation that the chicken needs is a, you know, walls, windows, and each other. Chickens are very self-sufficient, as they've basically survived running around on farms for eons. I think the biggest concern should be proper ventilation and making sure the moisture gets out. Moisture in chicken coops breeds insane amounts of parasites and coccidiosis. It also has the potential to have things like salmonella if, you know, the manure isn't taken care of, which the biggest concern should be like drainage of moisture. A dry chicken coop is more important than a warm chicken coop, for the birds at least. And then, I feel like another important thing to consider would be to giving, give a bird a roost. This helps greatly.
That's in our laws.
That is in the law.
That's in the law.
All right, I'm glad that's in the law.
It is.
The chickens need that, so they don't sleep in their own poop.
And keeping it clean on a regular basis, too, is in there.
I feel like if, you think it would be wise, a suggested thing is to clean out the manure once a week during the spring and summer, and then once every two weeks during winter, because, well, the dirty manure helps comfort the chickens, which makes them less prone to getting, you know, chills, and it does keep them warm. It's also way harder to clean out a coop in winter, but in winter, you don't have the problem of it being warm and wet. It's usually neither. So.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Hello.
Hi there. I'm John Polk, I live in the village. My wife and youngest daughter are here too. Thank you for putting this together. I think this is great. It's good to have, I'm, I'm really happy that we're moving forward, and hopefully we'll have, soon have a law allowing chickens.
Yeah.
I have some concerns about the draft, some that I think could speak to some of the issues that were raised already. In a couple of different places, so in, in, I don't know if I have the absolute most current version of it, but in, in the version that I'm looking at, it was section 3.4, where it talks about the minimum standards and conditions of the hen house and enclosure. In section B, it talks about scattering chicken food and feed on the ground being prohibited. Will that, how is that going to be assessed, if someone is doing that?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, we have regulations, it's like any zoning thing, we're gonna help people follow the rules, because otherwise, you know, some of the complaints we had, or not complaints, some concerns we had earlier about food being scattered on the ground and attracting other animals and things like that, looking at other municipalities that required the, the troughs, it seemed like the better way to go. Now, can I, can we actually 24/7 babysit everybody and hope they're gonna do, you know, no, we can't do that, but we, we put it in there, because that's our intent, is No, we can't do that, but we, we put it in there, 'cause that's our intent, is to try to mitigate the things people brought to us.
Sure, I guess the, my, my suggestion might be to say, okay, you, you do have a line here that's saying hens should, shall be fed from a trough or container, and that makes sense to include. Um, I think it would be difficult to actually prohibit scattering of food or feed on the ground. I mean, chickens do naturally go around and pick stuff up off the ground and, and, you know. And, uh, so I think, you may change, may consider changing that to a recommendation rather than a prohibition. You know, you've already said that they should be fed, shall be fed, from a trough or a container. So, you know, that's, that's where the food should be placed, will be placed. The other line, I think, may be redundant, or not, not actually is necessary. In sections, uh, three point four C and in section three point four D, there's repetitive language, both of which say cleaning of the enclosure and run must be done on a daily basis.
That's not the new version.
Okay, that's not in there then.
It's, um, on a regular basis.
On a regular basis.
On a regular basis.
Very good, thank you.
Sorry, that's not in there.
Yep, very good.
Yep, that's the, I think that was first draft, 'cause somebody shared that with you.
Yes, they did.
And that was a couple drafts earlier.
Good, 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 okay, yeah, I, I, I wasn't sure if I was grabbing the most recent thing.
No, I had to think about that.
Um, in, uh, so it's good that that's regular.
Regular basis, yeah.
Yeah. Um, one other one, there was an extra word, so I like to read things and edit things. In section four point one, um, talking about the storage of any chicken manure being discouraged, um, there, uh, this third sentence starts off sanitarily capitalized, and then capitalized if the presence of chicken manure shall lead to unsanitary conditions that sanitarily can be removed. You may consider that.
Okay.
Or at least change your capitalization of your next word, if, if that's going to be the.
That's fair.
Other than that, looks great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm back, did you miss me? So, there is, um, one problem with the banning the food on the ground. Chickens need grit. There are small pebbles, you can buy them at an agway, but they're typically a bunch of tiny sto-. Stones are not gonna be found on the ground, especially if they're going to be kept in a run. There's also tons of enrichment feeds and feeds that are beneficial for them, their health, that can't just be stored in a trough all the time. Um, what I think might be a good idea would be to say, they have to have a trough in their coop to put the general-use food in or the food that's gonna be there. However, they should be allowed to throw the occasional handful of food in there. It's beneficial for the chickens, it's beneficial for the chickens' enrichment and their health, which are very important things concerning the animals. Thank you for your time, once again.
Thank you.
Hi, Kate.
Good evening, Kate Proventur. I live here in Altamont. I want to thank you for doing this work. I'm just thinking, you've learned more about chickens than you ever wanted to know.
I really have. I feel like I've gone through a course.
And maybe needed to know.
Sure.
Uh, I was thinking about how much would be helpful to have that kind of information for some of our other regulations. However, I'm not gonna do that.
One thing at a time. I gotta clear this out of my brain after this.
I wanna thank you all. I, I wanna recognize the board. This is the third time this has come up. I greatly appreciate it. I just, I think it's something we ought to be doing. I've spoken on that before, in terms of this, and, and I want to, uh, say that I was one of the original committee that worked on it.
You did.
And also reviewed this draft and made suggestions, so thank you for that. I appreciated the board, uh, making sure that Zone Ten is included in this. Um, I, I do think that the fifty, I know I sent that information, you always say it, to the board, that the, the distance of, um, the coop having to be fifty feet from a neighboring residence is just a long. I think that neighboring communities have twenty-five feet.
Some, I have, I have my list of all of them, so we're not the only ones with fifty. And actually, when I was looking at other places, some are from fifty to three hundred feet, depending on the communities across the United States that you look at. I think when we were putting this together, our thought was, we are really legislating for something that will work with a very dense, close residential neighborhood, so we have to kinda, some, some of us would be fine, you know, 'cause we're gonna have the room, but some people aren't, and you have to respect their neighbors who maybe don't want to have dogs that are gonna be even twenty feet. When I look at twenty feet, which is probably like that, you know, maybe their dogs would be barking at the chickens or whatever. You know what I'm saying? We don't wanna create. And when I talked to Gary about that, uh, we felt, looking at others, you know, even Voriesville has the same, or not Voriesville, I'm sorry, um, blah, 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 somebody else had fifty here, I'm looking at it quick. But, um, it just, it, it seemed to, it was in our, one of our drafts before, I think, as well. It was, it was in the original. And so, it seemed to make sense when I measured it out and looked at it, you know, that just trying to respect the density of the inner part of the village and how, you know, how it could affect neighbors.
I hear that. I think it's gonna make it a little hard for some Zone Ten folks.
It won't fit everybody. It, it can't, it won't fit everybody, but it'll fit the majority, I think.
Like, on fifteen would be all right, and on our ten, you're right.
Yeah, it's gonna hit stuff.
Because the other thing is that the coop has to be ten feet from the back. I'm thinking most people are gonna put it against their, their back lot line, right? So, it has to be ten feet from there, too.
It does.
So, I, I would argue for twenty-five or thirty, but other than that, I appreciate this, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you for helping us.
I just have a question. You know, as, as one of the only people that hasn't been on the planning or zoning board, if somebody wanted to build a chicken coop but only had forty feet to the nearest property, is there a mechanism where they can apply for?
It's gonna be a variance.
So, you know, this is basically laying out, ideally, this is what we want.
Yeah.
And if there's some really extenuating circumstances, and maybe your neighbors are on board with it, they could go through this kinda.
That's what the mechanism's there for.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Yep. Anybody else have anything? I'm just not seeing movement. So, we're not closing the public hearing, because, um, we are gonna continue and figure, do the seeker for this on October nineteenth at six o'clock. We didn't wanna wait till November, for one thing, 'cause we, you know, did not expect this to happen. We did not know it wasn't printed in the paper, the notice. Um, it was unfortunate, but we also, we have another, um, timeline engineering, uh, project we wanna talk about sooner than November, so it kinda worked out that if we can meet on the nineteenth, it's a Thursday night, um, we're gonna do it at six o'clock, and we will take any new comments at that time. Uh, people may write to us, you know, by then as well. I think a couple came in at four, which we don't have time to look at, it was the end of the day. So, that also will be included in our packets, and we will then listen, close the public hearing that evening, and then we'll do the seeker part of this. And, um, so it is a couple more weeks, but I thank you for coming out and speaking tonight, before we move on to the rest of the agenda.
And to be clear, people don't need to feel obligated to come again.
Oh, absolutely, yes, thank you for saying that. You don't need to, if you spoke tonight, you are on the record for the public comments. You don't have to come back and reiterate them again, unless you really want to, but you don't have to do that, okay? So, that is, yes.
I just have one other question. I, I was just on my phone, looking on the website.
Okay.
Recent version, I couldn't find it, so.
It's.
If you put somewhere prominent.
It's listed with the agenda.
With the agenda.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, sure, why not? It's technically still open, so we're good. No, I'm sorry. I'm surprised you. I've answered so many questions. Kathy Glass from Bosn Kil Road. Again, like so many people, thank you, thank you, thank you, for taking the time and going through the effort to make this ordinance possible. A lot of the concerns that I've heard addressed from everybody, I did talk to Mayor Denine a number of times. You taught me well. I had to ask questions. A lot of my information came from the New York State Ag and Markets Field Vet, Dr. Amy Wilsey. She's the one who talked to me about the necessity of having a covered run to prevent the avian bird flu from the migrating birds. The necessity of ventilation to keep the humidity out of the coop, especially in the wintertime, very important, but also protecting the birds from our climate. I know personally a number of people that have had frost-bitten birds. Their combs turned black. My sister, who lives in Vermont, had one of her roosters, her, his feet turned black, and she had to have him euthanized. We live in the Northeast. It's common sense, what extent the coop has to be protected, whether it's just protection from the wind or it is some form of insulation, that again would be up to the building inspector. But I think a lot of this is common sense. Yes, they do need scratch feed. The chickens naturally, that's their instinct, to scratch around for food. But Amy Wilsey did say, to prevent vermin and rats, you pick the food up at night. You don't put scratch down at five o'clock in the afternoon and think your birds are gonna eat all of it immediately. You do it in the morning. There's a lot of common sense, but if anybody has any questions, Dr. Wilsey is phenomenal, and she is very, very accommodating to questions and phone calls. And she really guided me tremendously, so, just an idea. No, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
So, one thing I wanna point out about insulation, um, chickens are peckers. They, in, in all the most unswearing sense of that word, um, they will attack a wall. If you put, if you have a mandatory insulation requirement, chickens will eat the insulation, and it can kill them, so.
I think the term insulation is, is being, um, taken differently. I think.
Maybe you wanna, well, this is, maybe you wanna change that to proper weatherization, instead of insulation?
That may be a good, better term to use. I, I think the intent was just to say insulated, but not dictating using insulation.
Ours, our coop is, we're on Knox on the side of the hill in the wind, and our coop is a single piece of wood. And our chickens.
Which means they're insulated from wind. I think that's all that term is meant to say.
Okay, a- as evidenced by what everybody else here has thought that word meant. Um, it's what my company calls blinking word, which is anybody who reads it can attach their own meaning to it. And maybe we just wanna be more specific that weatherization is what you're going for here.
Okay, thank you. I lost my agenda. Okay. Okay. At this time, I'm gonna move on to the agenda items, uh, number three. Um, it says, "Consider authorization for Mayor Denine to sign National Grid Letter of Agreement for provision of maps and records for an estimated cost of $1,000." Just to give you an idea of what this is, um, with the National Grid lights that we purchased, that we replaced with LED lights, what they failed to, um, give us were the maps, the GS maps of the underground wiring, so, Superintendent Muller has had to answer questions from the U-Dig folks, saying, "We need your maps." I think every year, they want them submitted. We don't have the maps, and National Grid, um, charges us $1,000 in every municipality. We're not happy about it, as far as we think NIPA should've caught this part. Uh, we're working on that, but all four municipalities involved in this project will have to do this. We're just, uh, kinda getting ahead of the game, because we really like to submit them. It takes a couple months to get them. So, it, the money will come out of our loan funds. It's not a budget impact, just so you know. It's just our, out of our lighting loan, okay? Could I have a motion for that?
Summit.
Tressa, and Nick is second. And roll call, please.
Justice Mitchell Lewis.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Uh, item four is, "Consider authorization to expend $24,900 from the Repair Reserve Fund, subject to permissive referendum, to pay for replacement of HVAC systems for community room and Altamont Fire Department's members' room, per request of Jeffrey Muller, Superintendent of Public Works." Could I have a motion?
Still moved.
John is first, second.
Second.
Nick is second. And roll call, please.
Justice Mitchell Lewis.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item five is, "Consider authorizing Jeffrey Muller, Superintendent of Public Works, to solicit bills for the fire, following items. Two thousand four Dodge Ram 2500 pickup with plow for a minimum bid of $2,000. Toro Groundmaster 327 mower for a minimum bid of $300. Kubota F three sixty, three six eight zero mower, snow blower with cab for a minimum bid of 400, and a two thousand twelve F four fifty six-point-seven Powerstroke dump truck for a minimum bid of $30,000. Bids will be opened on October twenty-fifth at 10:00 AM." Could I have a motion?
Still moved.
Nick is second.
I'll second.
Is Tressa? And roll call, please.
Justice Mitchell Lewis.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item six, "Consider authorizing Jeffrey Muller, Superintendent of Public Works, to move forward with termination of water service on October tenth, 2023, if payment is not received from the following, uh, delinquent non-residents. A State of Beatrice Rosinski, 111 Western Avenue. Todd Clark, 721 Route 146. Scott McGovern, 15 Agewon Lane. Jason Fraser, 37 Armstrong Circle. And Scott and Jody Rutledge, 1, 129 Burn Altamont Road." Could I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
John is first, and second.
I'll second.
Oh, Nick, sorry. Roll call, please.
Justice Mitchell Lewis.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item seven is, "Consider request of Altamont Community Tradition to hold Winterfest on December tenth, 2023, from 12:00 to 4:00 PM." Uh, can I have a motion, please?
Summit.
Tressa, and second?
I'll second it.
And John? And roll call, please.
Justice Mitchell Lewis.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.
Trustee Scally.
In favor.
Mayor Denine.
In favor. Item eight. I'm gonna actually do, um, I'll do eight A after, I got an extra one to add here. "Consider request of Altamont Fire Department to participate in the following events. Fire Prevention Open House on October seventh and Comedy Night on November fourth, per request of Paul Miller, Chief." Could I have a motion?
Still moved.
Nick is first, and second?
I'll second.
Tressa? And roll call, please.
Justice Mitchell Lewis.
In favor.
Trustee Farrakhan.
In favor.